Hello.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening.
All right, you are all set. You can begin when you're ready.
Hello. Okay.
Good evening.
All right, is everybody here? Do we have everybody we need?
Yes.
Okay, just for the record, I will call the Coventry zoning board meeting to order. And I do not have any of the minutes of the last month's meeting. I don't know if anybody else does, so I can't approve it. And obviously, everybody knows their own fire exits where they're located. This time here, I'd like to have Kerry take the roll call.
Bob Crowe.
Yeah.
Mike New.
Here.
Russ Lockley.
Present.
Keith Cludier.
Here.
Ed Ionati.
Here.
Okay, so that gives me a total of five?
And Mike New.
Yeah, Mike was in the attendance.
Okay.
Okay, so we, what the record reflects, we have five members present. So we can conduct business. Okay. I'd like to start off with the applications of presented. I guess that's what we have, am I right? Since I don't have an agenda here.
Okay, so I had emailed you everything. They have the ratification for the town of Coventry as the owner of Watershed Solar Development as the applicant. And also, under Old Business, the applicant of Gail McHugh and Daryl Moore, the Horn and Cauldron Church, has been continued until April 6, 2022.
Okay, April 6, 2022, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We ratify the decision for the watershed program on all roads.
Okay, who's that to second it? Keith or Mike?
Mike.
Mike, Mike New, okay. Russ made the motion, seconded by Mike New. All those, I gotta do an individual vote. No, I can do it all together.
Yeah.
All those in favor of I say aye.
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 All right, so that's all five votes. And is there any nays? No nays, so I take it that decision has been ratified. What else do you have, Kerry?
Nothing else, just moving along to the old business, uh, new business.
Okay.
We need to approve the last week.
Bob said he doesn't have a copy, which they were emailed Thursday, Monday, so he said he can't.
I don't have it. It should be in your email, but.
I'm going through here in the landfill. It didn't show it. And then it didn't show it on the planning commission recessions. There's only one guy didn't get on that either.
Um.
Mike, you were I can't forward because I'm not at work, but Mike, you and Bob were on the same email, is it correct?
Yeah, let me see if I can forward it to him.
Okay, thank you.
Or, why don't we continue if that makes sense? And at the end, if we can just ratify at the end?
If we can, are we gonna, we're gonna approve it next month?
Okay, so you want me to read the old, the new business then?
If you would, please.
The owner applicant is Roberto and Cindy Flores. The location is AP 16 lot 126, One Whittier Drive. Zone is R 20. Applicants are seeking a dimensional variance to construct a 13 by 23 addition to be utilized as an in-law with the northeast corner of the addition being 17 feet from the property line where 22 is required.
Okay, I'm looking for that now. And that is, I have the scan of the 2022 0301. Start and write it. 160 Shady Valley, no, that's not it. It's not included in that, right? Kerry?
Um, I sent each application as its own individual documents, so if you got that one, the other ones should be there.
Okay, I'll look at the next one. Okay. Just the same thing twice. I got one shady, 160 Shady Valley Road twice.
It could be different documents.
Okay.
Mike, can you look at your emails?
I just gotta find it.
Yeah.
21 Mile Road. Oh, 21 Mile Road, that's not it. Okay.
It's gonna be the next one.
It'll be the next one. Okay, anyways, I looked at this one here quickly and I saw, just going from memory, Kerry, on this, you had some of the people checked off and the names were, were put on out at John Franklin Road, no? And I couldn't understand on the list of butters why some of the names were crossed out and the addresses were. And new names were put in.
Because I have to verify the butters list. And sometimes the GIS map is not updated, so we have to make sure we send it to the most recent owners. And that's why I cross out the old owners and write in the names of the new, the new property owners.
Right, I saw the new names, but I didn't see the new address.
There isn't a new address. That's the new owners of that particular property.
Some of them had the same address, other ones had the address also crossed out.
Right, because if a person bought a property, but they reside somewhere else, that's where the address would change.
Okay, wouldn't we have, wouldn't that address be forwarded to us or put in a list?
I, I don't know how to answer your question. What happens is if, if someone buys a property in Coventry, but they still live in West Warwick, both addresses are gonna show up.
Right, but we have no address. We just have the, we just were, only got the list. We only got the individual's name with no address.
Then they, they live at the address that is shown on that list. Who, which one are you looking at?
You, you crossed it out. Okay.
To update the name.
I just sent you the documents to your email.
You just sent it to me?
Yeah, I sent, I sent the minutes from last month and I sent the, the documents that show all the different subjects for tonight.
Okay, thank you. It's only more documents. Michael, yep. Okay. Um. We're doing which one now? The?
Whittier Drive.
Which one?
Whittier Drive.
Whittier Drive, it's gotta be the uh, let's see if it's this one. It's John Franklin, so that's not it.
Yeah, Whittier Drive, I think there was a third one in, in, in the in the pile there.
That's 21 Mile Road, they want it. That's my road. Let me try this one here, second one. Oh, okay, man, I see, you're saying third one in, yep.
Yeah, when I, when I, when I printed them out, they were, there was a third one in.
304 Franklin Road, I got.
No, there should be one more. The one we're looking for, there'll be one left.
21 Mile Road, everything but. Okay, Whittier Drive, I just got the staff report on that.
That's the one you want.
Yeah, okay. And that's putting a 13 by 14 addition.
Yeah, this is the in-law one.
Now, did you send me the list of butters?
Yes, the whole application was sent to everyone.
Mike, did you send me over the list of butters?
I didn't, I sent you, I believe so. I believe it should be in that package I sent you. Let me.
I got a staff report.
Yeah, that's one of them. I sent you two different emails.
All right, let me see, okay, let me check your email.
Okay, hang on. I got it here for you.
Hang on, I'm trying to get back to it. Okay, let me see if I got another one here.
It's John Staley here. If I can, I'm just gonna share my screen with the list of butters. Everybody can see it, and then we can.
I'm about to send it to him.
We can move forward with.
In parallel to that, John.
Yep, one second. Bob, can you see that? The, the list?
Okay, no, I'm going back. I'll go back to see which one he is on board.
Yeah.
I got the one from Mike, and that's it.
It's on the screen. I just sent you another one too, with, with the butters. But John's got it on the screen. If you wanna go to the screen. Meeting.
Okay, test, oh, no, I got, man, I'm really I hate to say it, I'm in 2013. How do I get up to the column?
Bob, can't see the butters on the screen right now.
No, I don't. Unfortunately, I'm away.
No, no, on the screen, on the screen at the meeting.
Go to the Zoom meeting, Bob.
Okay, yep, okay, I do, yep.
There you go, right there.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. New, Zoom. Oh, boy. Hello, okay, I got this here. All right, continue on with this one anyway.
I've already wrote it into the record, so perhaps you want the applicants to explain their projects?
Uh, yes, if the applicant, so I can see him swear, man.
Cindy and Roberto, whenever you're ready, you can.
Okay, we are here.
Right here.
Okay. Cindy and Roberto, please give me a full name and address.
Cindy Flores, One Whittier Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Roberto Flores, One Whittier Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay. You swear to tell the whole, I ask you, raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of the board?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and your full address is?
One Whittier Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay, thank you. Now, point to me always what you'd like to do.
So our house is a ranch to the far right, we have a den. So we wanna add, in addition, make an addition. I don't know if in the picture you can see this like a slab, that's basically kinda where the addition would go. And in the den that we have there now, we're basically gonna swap it and make that bedroom.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna move the den to the other room.
Okay. Okay, so you're gonna put, what size is the addition?
30 by 26?
23.
23, I'm sorry, 13 by 23.
13 by 2. Okay, I'm just having problems here, trying to locate. Okay, now, on this one here, uh, the, this is gonna be an in-law. How, I didn't quite understand the plans. How is the people, how was your, is your in-laws, your, your parents living there?
No, no, what, um, what we have is, it's just my husband and I, we have an 11-year-old daughter and we have a, an adult 33-year-old daughter with a disability.
Okay.
And so we want to, with COVID, we learned that there, we have no separation right now, and it's not good for her to get sick. You know, the, the rest of us are in a healthier mode, so we realize that we need to kinda give her her own space, so then she's the one that's basically going to be there in that, in that area.
Okay, so your 33-year-old daughter's gonna be at that location.
Yes, she lives with us now. She's always lived with us.
Okay. Okay, and the access to her unit is gonna be through your house, or is it gonna be from the outside?
So actually both. Because she'll have, in the addition, we're planning on putting in a sliding door there, so she'll have access to go out, but then she also have, will have access to come into the rest of the house.
Okay, so the sliding door is facing where? The, the backyard?
Uh, yes, to the side.
To the side, okay.
And we're thinking, we're thinking that we're probably gonna put a door also facing the driveway to make it easier for her to go in and out.
All right, so you gotta put two doors.
Correct, one sliding door and one 36-inch door.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Got a couple of questions, Bob, if you don't mind.
Please.
Okay, are you adding a bathroom?
Yes.
But not to the existing addition. The bathroom is gonna be in the den. We have a den there, and that's where the bathroom's gonna go. The addition is gonna have, go ahead.
But you're adding another bathroom besides the one you have?
Correct.
Okay, now, there's sewers there, or is this a septic system?
Septic.
Bathroom doesn't, doesn't count for that, though. It, it's bedrooms. It, it, it's bedrooms. If you add bedrooms, that's when you gotta worry about expanding the septic system. But the person already lives there. I think there's already a bedroom, I'm not sure. Counts.
Yes.
I, I get your question, though. I, I see where you're going with it.
Yeah, I don't, I, I, I understand that that's the rule, but it doesn't make sense, but.
Yeah.
Okay, what, yeah, what he's asking is, you have the septic system updated?
No, I called DEM and told them what we were doing. And they told me that I didn't have to have anything updated because we, we were not adding a bed.
But you're adding the bathroom, like, totally.
You gotta be adding a bedroom because you're in the apartment you're putting in for her, that's gonna have a bedroom, isn't it?
It's already existing bedroom.
There's a.
In, in, next to, in other words, the, the last room is a bed.
Yeah, she's just gonna move from one room to another, guys. It's not really adding a bedroom. The other room's gonna be a den or something.
So are you gonna add a kitchen?
Yes, we adding a, a kitchen with a sink on it, of course. And that's what she's gonna have, like, a living room, kitchen attached, pretty much.
Okay, we would have to have a statement from DEM saying that the new plans are approved with the existing septic system.
Bob, it's John Staley, if I may, um, because the plans, at the building permit stage, the plans are gonna show that there's no additional bedroom. So if there's no bedroom being built, then DEM doesn't even have to get involved at all.
Yes, but our, our building officials, because we're putting in another kitchen and we're putting up another, and we're making the room there. You're, you're saying there's no physical addition being added to the house?
There's an addition being added to the house. However, if you can just give me one moment.
So can I extend some whiteness? So did they take one of the bedrooms and turn it into a den? And now they're gonna turn that back into a bedroom and they're gonna make, make the, put a kitchen in that, involved with where the den used to be and just add on to the right-hand side of that? You know, it's like, it's a, was it a three-bedroom ranch? And now it's still technically gonna be a three-bedroom ranch? Except it's gonna have an extra bathroom and a.
From the kitchen, it's gonna have an extra bathroom and kitchen.
Right.
So I.
From DEM, it's still a three-bedroom ranch, it's still a three-bedroom ranch.
With two kitchens and two, with two kitchens.
Yeah, I guess. It's because the.
Because what we'd have to do is, once this individual is no longer living there, this would have to revert back and the kitchen would be have to torn out to a single-family home.
John, is that, is that the case? I thought it was just a bed, a bedroom that, that flipped that lever for a septic system upgrade. Just the bedroom, right? That's the, that's the law.
Well, that's DEM, but the town wants they are in-law units. We put the stipulation on that so that they don't become rental units that, once that individual is no longer there that it reverses back to a single-family home.
Got it, yeah.
Right, so Mike, in answer to your question, yes, it has to do with the number of bedrooms. That's when it, it kicks in with DEM. As far as what you said, Bob, yes, the, the ordinance states that the special use permit shall only be valid for, um.
Three years, I believe. Isn't it, John, and they're supposed to come back?
Not, I don't think, because this is handicapped.
Not, we don't, we don't do the three-year rule. It doesn't apply anymore.
No, okay.
It doesn't apply anymore. Wow, that is something new to me. When did this happen? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't apply to this one, because this is.
It's been that way for a few years now.
Nobody advised us or the board.
If I may, we can put a condition on the decision that it expires upon the sale of the property. That it does not run with the property.
That's correct.
I, I can deal with.
Yeah.
Okay, is the individual okay with this? So I wanna ask them up front, right up front.
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that. We're not putting like a huge kitchen, we're just putting us, you know, a sink for her. It'll have a small refrigerator, it'll have a small electric stove, that's, that's it.
I think it's terrific, and don't get me wrong. It just is, in order to keep it from turning into an apartment upon sale, or you're no longer using it for a family member like you are, it would have to revert back to a single-family home. Is that okay with you?
So just so I understand, to revert back to a family home, all that would need to happen is to take out the kitchen?
Yeah, take out the kitchen, and that's it.
So that could be, that could be kind to be like a son's room or whatever the case may be later on, correct?
That could be what?
It could be just a, basically another den.
You could, you could turn it into anything you want.
We just have to take out.
Not a kitchen.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not a kitchen, and it wouldn't be available for rent or anything like that.
That, that's not the, that's not the intention here.
I know it's not your intention, but unfortunately, if somebody else took over or something else happens, we just never know what's gonna happen in the future. And this is just one of the documents and requirements for, the zoning board has requested in the past.
Okay, yeah, we know a problem with that.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna turn this back over to the rest of the members of the zoning board, see if they have any further questions on it.
I'm good. All set for me, Bob?
Okay.
All set, Bob.
Keith, all set, all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mike, Russ?
Yep, good.
All set. If, if I may, Mr. Chair, at the risk of complicating things just a bit more, the application is also request, the applicant is also requesting a dimensional variance because the proposed addition will be 17 feet from the property line where 22 feet is required. I just think that the, the board, that.
I'm glad you brought that up, but I have absolutely no problems with the 17 feet only. I don't know if any other board member has any problems with that. No, no problem.
No.
Everything's good.
Okay. Since we've discussed this in quite a while tonight, I would like to have a motion that we vote on this tonight.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to see if there's any comments on this?
Oh, you're 100% correct. We need to open this up to the public and see if there is any comments on this. Is there anybody out there that has any questions on this applications at all, or any kind of comment whatsoever? Is anybody out there?
If there's anybody that would like to speak on this application, you may do so by using the hand raise feature on Zoom. All right, Mr. Chair, it doesn't look like anybody wants to speak on this application at this time.
Okay, so you got nobody out there that wants to speak? Okay, if there's nobody wants to speak on this application, I'd like to have a member entertain a motion that we vote on this tonight, and I think it was Keith, that you said it, or Mike?
Mike, Mike's the most.
Mike, seconded by Keith, is that Keith?
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor say aye, do we vote on this tonight?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, I'll do a roll call on this at this time here. Keith Cludier, how do you vote on this?
I approve. What are you doing, the special use permit or the dimensional variance?
Uh, let's do the special use permit and then the dimensional variance, special use permit.
I approve.
Approved, you approved as, with stipulations.
I just have a question, Mr. Chairman. Are we putting the restriction that.
Are we putting the restriction that it expires upon the sale of the property?
Yeah, it's approval with stipulations.
Okay, and there's two special use permits, there's one for the in-law and one for the non-conforming lot, I think, right, John?
I think we can vote on that all as one.
Yes, I just wanna make sure we understand.
So, so it would constitute an expansion of a non-conforming structure, which requires a special use permit and also a uh special use permit is required because there's an in-law apartment, correct?
Okay, so just so we're clear on that, okay.
Okay, so I I I myself, Chair votes with stipulations. Russ Lockley, how do you vote on this?
Approved with stipulation.
Uh Mike New, how do you vote on this?
Approved with stipulations.
Okay, and I have Keith Cludia, I'm missing one, Ed Ionati, how do you vote?
Approved with stipulations.
Okay, so the application is approved with stipulations of uh special use permit. Okay, now, uh the variance. Uh well, let's vote on that, am I correct, uh John?
Yes.
Okay, uh I vote with uh with with stipulations again on that. Keith Cludia, how do you vote?
Approved with stipulations.
Okay, um Ed Ionati?
Approved with stipulations.
Russ Lockley?
Approved with stipulations.
Mike New?
Approved, stipulations.
Okay, our application is approved with stipulations. Okay, thank you very much all for that. Now, if we can open up the next application?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next application is Samuel Kagan, the location is AP three two nine, lot four three, twenty-one mile road. Zone is R three, applicant is seeking a special use permit to construct a twelve by twenty-four by ten point nine garage in the front of the property.
Okay, um is the individual here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, can I have you on the screen? Hello?
Yeah, I'm trying to get it to share. Are we good now? Can you hear me?
I don't, yeah, I can hear you, I don't see a video.
I don't see no video.
I've got, I mean, hit share.
Should be uh the left hand side of the screen says, stop video, share video.
Stop video. Okay, I start my video and then it asks for share.
There you go.
Are you good now?
Yep.
Yep, you're there.
Okay. I'm 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 sitting in front of the council chamber right now, I didn't realize you guys weren't gonna be here, so I'm working on my phone. Are we there?
Hello?
Yes, can you see me?
Yep, okay, I'm gonna ask you to re, give you a full name and address.
My name is, I gotta get out of there. My name is Samuel Kagan, what do you want, Mile Road, I'm in Rhode Island.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. So I can see you. Okay, do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Explain to me in your own words what you'd like to do here.
Um currently, I have a home with a two car garage adjacent, attached to it. On one side of the house, I have a uh an incline and on the other side of the house, I have a a uh a a a hill that goes down into a creek, so I have no access to the back of the house. I have a, we have three automobiles in the, in the family. And um one of them has been parked in a temporary structure that's uh off of the driveway. Twenty-one mile road, it's a hundred seventy feet from Mile Road. But I want to convert that temporary structure into a a better, more secure structure because I purchased a new truck and I wanna protect it from the elements and from the rodents. I don't need to have them eat all the the wiring. So I'm trying to put something in there that will protect the uh structure and that's the only location I can put it in.
Okay, um all right, I I saw your plans you submitted, they look very nice. Over to Antonet, and it looks like you're gonna top a nice structure now. The old, old structure you're gonna remove, correct?
Pardon me, I didn't hear what you said, there was some noise in the.
The old structure you're gonna remove.
Oh yeah, that that comes out and then I'm gonna have to uh prepare a foundation for it and then have a, the prefab structure dropped on it.
Okay, all right, uh and you're gonna be how far from the sideline?
Uh we're a hundred seventy feet from Mile Road and I think the side one is about uh hundred and fifty to two hundred feet, somewhere in that range.
Okay. All right, uh John, the only reason why he's here is because it's going in the front yard, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So um exactly as Mr. Kagan said, he's roughly a hundred and fifty feet from the side. Um and a hundred and seventy-five, seventy-five feet from the front. So there's no need for any dimensional variance or anything like that. It's simply because the structure is gonna be placed in the front yard that it triggered the need for a special use permit.
Okay.
There's really no other place to put it, Mr. Chairman, I went by it uh yesterday and uh, I mean.
It appears to be that way, and it's not gonna be that much out of space. Uh I don't have any problems with it at this time. Let's see if any other, that's what, that was Russ Lockley, right?
Right.
Okay, okay, uh anybody else? Mike New, do you have anything on this?
Uh anybody else in the neighborhood have uh garages in their front yard?
I don't know, I mean, uh most people are, their homes are hidden by the woods. So I've got woods that obstruct the view to the structure and to my home. So um I don't really know what other people necessarily have in front of their property or behind it. Um so I can't answer that.
Mile Road's pretty unique, it's, it's kinda rural, but it's not that far rural, but when you get down, there's a lot of houses you can't see from the street. They're all driveways. It's just the way it was set up years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, it was Autobahn property that was sold out and developed.
Right.
Okay. Maybe uh see if anybody from any of his neighbors have a concern.
Um Mike, if I, if I could answer that question for you, I just looked real quick on the G I S map and um on Mile Road. I picked out maybe two or three other properties that seem to have accessory structures in the front yard.
Right.
So it it is um.
It's a normal, normal.
Precedented.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, okay, uh Keith?
I don't have a problem, Mr. Chairman, as long as none of the neighbors do.
Okay, uh uh let's see how, Russ, you already spoke, Ed Ionati?
I have no problem with it, Bob, I've been, I've been by that property quite a bit and it's um very hilly-like behind the house and so on, and it is deep off the street, so I see any problem with it at all.
Do you feel that this would be the most viable location?
Correct.
For the garage, okay. Let's see if there's anybody else out there that has any questions or would like to speak on this application. Is anybody in the audience, John?
Um if anybody would like to speak, again, you can uh raise your hand at this time. It does not look like anybody wants to speak.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion uh made tonight that we vote on this tonight. Is anybody would like to make that motion?
I make a motion that we vote on it this evening.
Ed Ionati and seconded by Russ, I believe.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, uh at this time here, I'd like to do a roll call vote on the application. Uh I vote chair as uh as to approve as presented. Uh Ed, how do you vote?
I approve as presented.
As presented, Russ Lockley?
Approved as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Keith Cludia?
Approved as presented.
Mike New?
Approved as presented.
Oh, great. Okay, uh unless there is something else, I believe that application is approved as presented. John, do you have anything else on that?
No, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay, Kelly, can we have the next application?
The next application is Chris Kutu, the location is AP forty-nine, lot seventy, one sixty, Shady Valley Road. Zone is R R two, applicant is seeking a special use permit and dimensional variance to construct a twelve by twenty addition to the northeast corner of the home. Addition will be thirty-two feet from the property line where fifty is required.
Okay, is the individual here?
I am.
Okay, fortunately, um. I can't see you because my phone, let's see what happens, okay. Okay, uh give you a full name and address?
Chris Kutu, one sixty, Shady Valley Road.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, explain to me in all words what you'd like to do.
Uh I own one point seven acres right on pond. Uh I am looking to add a twelve by twenty addition onto the gable end of right hand side of the, of a ranch, which is just, we're just reconfiguring the uh the inside of the house, adding your kitchen, and uh I think you have the plans right in front of you.
Unfortunately, I do not, uh Carrie did send me the plans, not your fault, not her fault. My computer's kinda messing up. Uh John, you, can you put the plans in front of me?
Yep, just one second, let me uh try to get that up there. So this is the floor plan, the proposed floor plan. And this is what's existing there at the moment.
If you can see where that twelve and twenty is on the right hand side, we're basically looking to square that off and make that livable space.
Okay, the pond is where?
On the deck side.
On the deck side.
Is that space gonna be a new bedroom?
It's, we're just enlarging the bedrooms. Lot adding, it's not adding a bedroom.
Okay.
Okay, uh John, will this need a D E M approval? Because of size?
No, so there shouldn't be um the need for D E M approval, they're um far enough off of the shoreline. So there's no need for that. Um the only thing that he'll need is is approval from this board for the special use permit and dimensional variance, and then of course a building permit.
Okay, does he have a state D E M approval system?
Yes.
So you can submit us the paperwork that your system's been approved by the state of Rhode Island.
Uh you mean currently?
Currently.
Yeah, so it was redone and whenever the flood was, when was the flood?
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten, it was redone.
It was redone, so you had a whole new septic system plan, okay, so the paperwork, the state should have sent you something back saying it was all approved after the installer put it in.
Yes.
All right, you can forward that to John?
Yes, not right now, I don't have it on right now.
No, I don't.
But I can get it yet.
When you get a chance, yes, okay, thank you, thank you for your patience. Okay, is uh any other members having questions on this?
I do not.
I'm good.
News good, uh I think that's Keith Cludia.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
You're all set, Russ Lockley?
Yep, all set.
Uh Ed Ionati?
I'm good.
Okay, at this time here, I'd like to see if there's anybody that would like to speak on this application or have any questions on the application. Is there anybody out there, John?
Once again, if there's somebody that would like to speak, you can raise your hand and we'll bring you in. There is nobody that wants to speak at this time.
Okay, since there is nobody to like to speak at this time, I'd like to have a motion to vote on this tonight.
So moved.
And that's uh Mike, Mike?
Seconded.
Made the motion seconded by Keith, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna start off with a roll call vote myself. Uh I approve as presented with the stipulation that the uh septic system uh uh updates have been, will be issued to John. Uh suddenly, the uh uh planning assistant. All right, and uh.
One thing, Chairman, uh Mr. Chairman, you have a special use permit and a dimensional variant, variance.
Okay, the dimensional, okay, let's do a special use permit first and then we'll do the variance, the variance, okay, yeah, okay, let's do the special use permit and that's what I voted on to approve. Ed Ionati, how do you vote on this?
I approve.
Uh Russ Lockley?
Approved.
Uh Mike New?
Approved.
Keith Cludia?
Approved.
Okay, special use permit is approved, okay, uh the uh as Jane said, the variance, uh what what is that pertaining to, Jane?
He's asking for thirty-two feet from the sideline where fifty is required.
Okay, so he has a full thirty-two feet, okay, looking at that, I did see that. And I didn't have any problems on that. John, do you have anything on that?
Um no, so I I will say um that uh
Right.
The thirty-two feet, it's, it didn't seem um far below the standard as set by other.
Okay, and the planning board also approved that, correct?
Correct, they they did forward a favorable recommendation.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions on that? Okay, now, does anybody from the public have any questions on that? Anybody from the public, John, that would like to speak on that?
No, there's nobody from the public that wants to speak on this application.
Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call, uh I'm gonna ask for a a vote on this application tonight. Do I have a a motion made?
So moved.
Uh that was Russ Lockley, I believe?
Yep.
Seconded.
Okay.
Seconded by Keith, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, nays, ayes have it. Okay, I can start with a roll call vote on myself. Uh I approve as presented. Uh Russ Lockley?
Approved as presented.
Keith Cludia?
Approved as presented.
Mike New?
Approved as presented.
Okay, Ed Ionati?
Approved as presented.
Okay, application is approved as presented. Is there anything else? Okay, application is approved as presented, is there anything else we have?
Uh, we have the application of Joshua and Lane Mays. Location of property is AP ninety-one lot zero zero seven, three oh four John Franklin Road, zone is RR two. Applicants are seeking a dimensional variance and a special use permit to construct a thirty by thirty by thirty garage in the front of the uh barn in front of the property. Thirty-two feet from side property line where fifty is required, the barn will be thirty feet in height where nineteen is allowed and exceed the allowable lot coverage.
Okay, so he's in front of us for location, being in the front and he's also here for height, am I correct?
Yes, in lot coverage.
Lot coverage, okay, now, what's he gonna do with all those other structures that are there?
Um, maybe he can explain it better than I.
Okay, is the applicant here, please?
Yes.
Okay, um. Please, please give your full name and address?
Joshua Mays, three oh four John Franklin Road, and I'm here with my dad Steve.
Okay, is he also gonna give uh testimony on this?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask him to give his full name and address.
My name is Stephen Mays, sixty-five Hill Farm Camp Road Coventry.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you both to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, not to put the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, in your own words, explain to me how you'd like to put this, I guess, garage up?
Yeah, so we're building a, uh it says barn, it's a very small barn, um, we the plan is to. In the gar- in the garage, it'll be more like a two-car sized garage. And it'll be, although it's technically in the front yard, it's really. If you ha- if you look at the property, it's more like on the side of the lot, my my driveway goes way down off the front, so it actually drives down the front of the house. And then in the far right is a spot where the barn is gonna be.
Alright, is it gonna have access onto the main road?
It will not, it will it'll have access to the driveway, which has access to the main road, but the barn itself will not have access to the main road.
The barn itself will not, so you'll keep those trees in the front?
Yes, the trees will stay.
Trees will stay, okay, now, what are you gonna do with all the other structures?
Yeah, the other structures, so I have um, there's a scoreboard shed, which is part of a basketball court. That, and all these were pre-existing when I bought the house, I ju- I recently bought the house in August, um. So the basketball shed is, none of them are big enough to restore both, that's what it really boils down to. Um, there is a small shed in the back that is gonna be used for just storage, uh my own personal storage. And then there's a smaller shed up in the front that is used for like yard equipment and things like that.
Okay, now, um. So you're not gonna be able to put that yard equipment in the new barn and eliminate that smaller shed?
Not with a wooden boat in it.
Not with a wooden boat in it, okay, okay, and you have the cemetery too, correct?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, and obviously you can't build on that.
Right.
Okay, now, I I've passed there a couple times, I I don't know why, I just thought there was more than that and outhouses, I thought there was more structures there.
There is the house that has an attached garage, there is a, like I said, a a shed that's used for mo- mostly yard equipment. Like my tractor and things like that, pools, the pool supplies and things um during the off-season. And then there's a sm- a very, very small shed, I don't even know if you would call it a shed, in the front of the pool, that is. It does, it doesn't even really have room for any storage, holds the chemicals and things like that, in the back, the very back of the lot, there is a. I I guess it's a shed as well, it has a garage door on it, but it it's it's a shed, um and will probably store, my stepson has a. He's got like a little convertible car that he he uses and that's where he kinda would park it during the off-season, um and then there is a small. Um, I guess you call it a shed as well, but like, yeah, it's almost like a playhouse was built at some point for kids. Um, with just a regular door, there's a carport um that's next to that and then, as I said, the scoreboard shed.
Okay, what I'm suggesting is, is there any of these things that we can uh kinda clean up the area with? So it all, you know, looks nice and neat by us saying that uh it's a good idea to put that new uh barn in, the thirty by thirty?
I'm not against any of that, however, you can't see any of it, even driving up to the front of the house, none of it is viewable, it's not viewable from the street, it's not viewable from the driveway. It's not viewable unless you literally walk out to the back of the house, it's completely blocked by the structure of the house.
Alright, but I'm just trying to use reasons for approving the new structure. You know, cause that's kinda like it's in the front yard, you know, um. You know, uh, it almost, you know, I know, i- i- it almost seems like that should go in another space. And I'm trying to figure out why I wanna keep all those other buildings and approve this new one too, maybe.
May I say something? May I say something? Sure, so the pre- a previous owner, we're not sure which one, but a previous owner had excavated a space. And that's the space we wanted to use, cause there's an enormous amount of boulders on that property, large boulders. Uh, big enough that it would take a very large machine to move them, so the only other thought we we had was to get it maybe closer to the cemetery in that area. But the amount of excavation work would make it prohibitive cost-wise to try to move it over, to get it away from the property line and move it over a little bit. Also would put it more in the front yard of the house, um accessing from around the back, um. Probably not a utili- utilization of space back there, it would require building a driveway uh down into the backyard. To access it from the front, drive all the way down the back, um and that's one of the accessible certain times of year that you can even drive down there. Because of either ice, snow, um, the the lawn gets wet and it gets difficult to drive over, cause it's all, the the lawn is all manicured. It's all taken care of in the backyard, it's a very nice looking piece of property.
Okay, alright, um. Okay, at this time here, I'm gonna uh see if the board members have any questions.
I don't have any questions at this point, Bob, I'd like to understand if there's any neighbors that would have any, any concerns.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, so coming in from John Franklin Road, when you make the. For the sake of argument, you take the big, you 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 go to the left at the fork, as we used to refer to it. Um, which is kinda the end of the road back in the day before Cassisi built up all of the front of it, but. So you're gonna come straight down that driveway for, looks like a couple hundred feet and then the house would be technically on your left, is that correct?
That's correct, and then past the house on the right is the location for the barn.
Okay, so it's gonna be that far down, okay, I'm looking.
Almost to the end of the property line.
Okay, which, uh, John, this would be the, the orange square that's on our report?
So, um, you're you're looking at the aerial view of the property, correct?
Can you see that?
Yes.
That picture, yeah, the aerial.
Yeah, so that orange square is actually a cemetery and.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Where would the barn go in relation to the cemetery?
So uh, it would be like on the on the picture, it would be below that.
Okay.
Property line.
That's fine, I have no problems with that.
Okay, uh, any other board members have any questions?
I'm all set.
Why do we need to have it so tall?
Yeah, that's a good question, so I'll I'll answer that, so there's two things, first of all, um, the property has been excavated to a point where.
If you were to take a a survey, and I just did it with Google Earth, so it's semi-accurate, but it's almost eighteen feet, the property behind. Josh's house or technically in front of it, if you wanna look at it that way, is eighteen feet higher than where the barn is going to go, so. That will obstruct a lot of the view of the barn from the neighbor, not to mention the fact that it's pretty well-treed there. But the height is a result of the second floor uh being a storage facility for primarily me. I, yeah, I moved, I moved from a four-bedroom house in Warwick to an eight-hundred square foot cottage on Johnson's pond. We're feeling the pain a little bit, so we thought would be appropriate to um make a little room upstairs in the barn.
What type of utilities?
Okay, oh, that that opens up a whole different world. So I'm gonna have plumbing and everything else?
No, absolutely not.
Oh.
Strictly storage.
So it's just gonna be a set of stairs going upstairs and that's it?
That's it.
Well, hopefully with a pulse string, so we can turn a light on.
Wow, yeah.
But this is not gonna be any resonance whatsoever.
No, no, absolutely not, no, there's no plumbing going in, uh, there's electricity going in, um, tha- that's it, yeah.
Okay, let me see if there's anybody out there that would like to speak on this application, is there anybody out in the audience, John?
Anybody would like to speak, you can raise your hand at this time and we'll let you in. It does not appear that anybody would like to speak.
Okay, at this time here, now, has that garage been staked out so we can see right where it's gonna go?
Um, so I do have some markers set up because we had some people give us quotes on building it. Um, they're not a hundred percent accurate as where they're gonna be, uh but they're very close.
And if you drive through the property, it's really obvious where it's gonna go because the ground is sculpted out where it's heading.
Okay, what we're gonna need is that staked out, cause we gotta know exactly where that's gonna go.
Okay, we can stake it out.
Okay, and I'd like to go out and take a look at that, now, put some, make the, when you do the stakes, put them bright uh green or red. All four corners.
Okay, okay.
Okay, did any other members of the board have any questions on that or anything else? I'd like to go out and take a look at this location.
Yeah.
Okay, uh. Keith, how do you feel on this?
I'd like to take a look at it too, Mr. Chairman, I I say we table it till next month.
Okay, alright, I have a motion made that we continue this to next month after we've got a chance to take a look at it. Uh, do I have a second on that?
A second.
Okay, Ed Ionardi's made it second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays, aye's have it, we thank you all very much and we.
We gotta do, do we have to do a date certain?
Uh, no, I don't think we have to do a date certain, just as long as the individual stakes it out by next week.
Next week, okay.
Okay, and then.
Any, any dogs on, any dogs on the property, anything we should be concerned about when we approach?
There is a dog, but he doesn't leave the house.
Okay.
Alright, so he's.
He may bark when you show up, but that's it.
Just don't bring mine.
Is he, is he chained up outside?
No, 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 he doesn't live outside, he's only inside.
He's only inside, okay, that was a very good question, okay, um. Anything else, uh, John, did you have anything on this?
Um, I would like to add one more thing, I do have pictures um that I can show if that would maybe help us bring this. To a conclusion tonight, I don't know if that's possible or not, but I do have pictures of property, if you wanna go out and see it, that's perfectly fine, but.
I'd like to go out and see it.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, but if you've got any pictures of what you're gonna put up or anything else, uh, that'd be great to submit to the uh administration.
Okay.
Okay, alright, Carrie, do we have anything else?
Uh, that's all we have.
Okay, um, I'm gonna try and go back and I'm not doing too good on what Mike sent over to me. Uh, if I lose you, give me a call, see if we're gonna approve, uh, okay, I just gained on that one.
So the only thing we're missing right now is approval of last month's minutes, right, that's all you wanna really do?
That's.
Yeah, I think we're gonna approve that next month, can, is that okay?
I got no problem.
Alright, I got no problems with that, you know, unless somebody else does, is that okay with the rest of the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, at this time here, I'd like to uh.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Russ, seconded by. Who's that?
Keith.
Chief, okay, right, Russ, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays, aye's have it, okay, thank you all very much for uh my part, kinda difficult meeting, doing it with the phone. And uh, I appreciate everybody's help here.